Okay. If I can have your attention, please. We're going to call the Tuesday, August 10th work session to order. And before I forget and before I'm negligent, though I haven't seen her yet today, I would like to wish my wife a happy birthday.
There you go.
Well, nothing says happy birthday like doing it on television.
We don't get the channel, so she won't even begin to see it. I heard they sang Happy Birthday to her at Puckett's, but I was someplace else at the time, so anyway.
Can I request that we do sing Happy Birthday?
No, you can request it, but that won't happen.
I'll request it for someone else. It's Clyde's birthday today.
Clyde! Happy birthday, Clyde!
Thank you.
See, my wife and Clyde. I knew you all had something in common. I know what it is.
My wife just had her birthday, and she got celebrated for three days. And thank goodness, those three days are over.
We'll sing "Ket" at six thirty.
All right.
Gary.
Having taken care of the important thing. We're going to move on. Item number two, our comments from citizens. We reserve that portion for people who wish to say something on issues that are not on this particular agenda. That would be just general stuff that somebody might want to comment on. And usually, if you have something that we're going to talk about on the agenda, we will recognize you at that point in time. So, not seeing any, we'll move on to item number three, which is a flood mitigation program report. Mr. Stuckey.
I'd like to just give you a brief update, and then we've got about a five-minute video that's sort of a summary of a program we're going to put on Franklin TV. That's about a 25, 30-minute video about the various things that happened in response to the May floods. So this is about a five-minute sort of highlights of that, and we want to show you that. Let me hit a couple basic areas that we've been interested in and tracking in terms of the response and recovery phase that we continue to be in. We have submitted now to FEMA just over $207,000 worth of cost sheets essentially that are requesting reimbursement for costs there. As we've indicated, the federal share is 75 percent. The state is picking up half of the local share, which is 12 and 1/2 percent, and then we would be responsible for absorbing that remaining 12 and 1/2 percent. So we continue to work on that. The pace of that, you'll see, kind of pick up in the next few weeks because FEMA was out for a little while on some other business, and now is back. And we're starting to work through a number of issues with them and go through those areas, in particular departments like streets where we have work ready to go. We just need to do it with the FEMA folks and get those submitted. So we're continuing to work on that. The property issues in terms of substantially damaged property that we are working with owners on. Again, that number still is around an estimate of 10 properties that we think fit that definition of 50 percent or greater damage. We will be looking at those properties with officials from TEMA later this week when they come in. This is the hazard mitigation team that will be in, visiting us and giving us more detail on that program and what that might mean for us, and look at how that fits in here. The other thing I want to remind folks about is we had offered throughout this process, recovery process, sort of a blanket provision that building permits related to flood activities would be issued free of charge. We're going to end that blanket provision as of the middle of this month, August 15th. We will continue to work with people on a case-by-case basis, and the board's given me some administrative authority to work with people in that regard. So we'll continue to do that, but as a broad generalization, we're going to wind that program down in the middle of this month and move forward from there. We'll continue to work, again, with TEMA folks who are coming in later this week and work with the FEMA team who's onsite, working through the various reimbursement issues and going through that. And that will be an ongoing process for months to come as we work through that. So those are kind of the basic issues we've been looking at in terms of what has changed in the last two weeks and what has happened overall. We'd like to show you this video just to summarize some of the other work that's happened in the response to the flood over the last several months.
Today on the City Insider.
Daniel Shaw, the owner of the parking lot underwater in a car.
We'll take you behind the scenes to the city of Franklin's response to the historic May 2010 floods.
I said, you know, everything y'all got in this house can be replaced, but nobody can replace either one of you. And I said, it's time to go.
On May 1st and 2nd, the city of Franklin, as well as the entire Middle Tennessee region, experienced historic floods. Forty-six counties have been declared disaster areas by the federal government, including Williamson County. More than 63,000 people have registered for federal emergency management assistance. Here in Franklin, many people were caught by surprise as the floodwaters rose.
911, where's your emergency?
Yes, ma'am. The water's at the top of cars right now. We're at Verizon and Sprint Farnsworth on Mallory Lane. None of us can get out to the street at all. There's a lot of cars that soon will be underwater.
Okay, is there anybody in the car?
Yes, ma'am. We're all in our cars. We had to vacate the furniture store, and there's one car. The water's almost to the top of it down in the front parking lot right now. And we can't get out anyway. We've tried all exits, and the water's too deep. There's probably maybe 50 to 100 or more of us up in this area.
The city of Franklin Police Dispatch received 200 emergency calls May 1st. The average number is usually 27.
Around 2:00 PM, we started receiving a lot of additional calls in reference to flooding around the same time the city went under a tornado warning.
Can you get out? No, please help us. All right, stay on the line with me. Okay. Oh, my God. We have dogs in the car, too. We thought we could make it, but we were wrong. I'm sorry.
Dispatch worked to get in more staff to handle the call volume.
Trying to keep it all balanced was a real challenge for all the dispatchers that we're on.
The city's streets department was the first on the scene as the high waters made several roads impassable.
In all my years being in and around the city of Franklin, being a resident here, I've never experienced the amount of rainfall that we had on the 1st of May, 2010. The rains just kept coming and coming and getting heavier and heavier, and we wound up closing somewhere in the neighborhood of 38 to 35 streets over that entire weekend.
Meanwhile, the city leadership team was working behind the scenes to communicate with the public and stay up to date with county and state officials.
As the rains continued to build from Saturday into Sunday, it really became more of a bigger flood issue, and we needed to look at larger responses and long-term recovery efforts, et cetera. And that's when we started to call in the whole of our city leadership team and to start having discussions about both what we do for immediate responses, as well as what our next actions would be to help people recover and return to normal as quickly as possible. One of the interesting things we ran into was just the importance of continuing to communicate with our citizens. And we did that in about every way we could think of, from going on radio and TV to also using Facebook, Twitter, using our website, setting up a phone number that people could call into and get updates, and really just trying to reach citizens any way we could to help provide them with good information.
Franklin, now, where's the emergency?
I just wanted to be sure that someone had reported that there's two cars stuck underwater. We don't know if there's anybody in them or not. We just got off of I-65 on East Moore Lane. I can't tell if anybody's in the car or not.
Franklin's police and fire rescue teams were working around the clock to rescue folks across the city.
We were doing water rescues. We were taking people from their vehicles that had climbed on top of their vehicles, and their cars were stalled out near Cool Springs area off of Mallory Lane. Every type of call you can imagine. And still, you had your routine fire calls, your fire-along calls, and your chest pains or heart attacks or medical calls going on. We sent some people over to Academy Sports, and they procured us a couple of boats to use. And it really, really helped us save a lot of people in this community. This is what we live for, is to help other people during their time of need.
Deputy Fire Chief Mike Colberson says one rescue stood out for him.
It was in Phil Stone, and it was mid-afternoon, probably Sunday, and it was an older couple. I would say they was probably in their 70s, late 70s. And, you know, we got up to the door, and they were worried about, you know, furniture and personal items that you might say. And finally, I looked at them both, me and Engineer Richard Hasley, and I said, you know, everything y'all got in this house can be replaced, but nobody can replace either one of you. And I said, it's time to go. And they looked at one another, and, you know, they said, he's right. And then the boat went, and we got them out in a hurry.
Just want to recognize Melissa Ryerson and Ray and the Franklin TV team for their efforts in this, and really the whole city organization, obviously, to what they did in response to the flood. And this program helps capture, across the organization, all the many responses that took place and what took place both by the city and our citizens to help one out there during this time, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And let's please keep in mind that there are a lot of people who are really still just at the beginning of their recovery. And it is not over by any means. It won't be for a long time.
It's true.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, moving on with that idea. Item number four, consideration of Resolution 2010-63, a resolution authorizing proration of tax assessments of certain real property damage by a flooding disaster as authorized by TCA 67-5-603.
This is really some authority that's been granted. Some of it already exists in the code, but the state legislature went on and took action to further alter this chapter, and it provides for the opportunity to provide a property tax proration to folks who were out of their homes due to the flooding for greater than 30 days. The county has taken similar action to start this process. This would work through the county assessor's office, and we would work to implement this. And we recommend that we go ahead and take action to provide this for folks who are impacted in that way. Rest anything else there?
The only thing that I would add is, a typical question would be, what is this going to cost? It's very difficult to forecast, but there is a very narrow window that this, hole that this fills. The assessor already had the authority if someone was out of their house because of a fire or flood for the rest of the year, but he had no capacity to do it in that interim term between the date of the flood and September 1st, when he has to produce the tax rolls. So this allows him to do a very short-term proration that was not, that previously was not allowed. But each individual city has to adopt this resolution to make it applicable to those citizens.
And it is a 2/3 vote requirement for the board to take this action. So this is on your agenda, I believe, tonight. So it will take a larger majority than normal to enact this.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Item number five is discussion regarding the Monticello project status. Eric, do you want to start with that?
I'll give a brief overview. I know there are some residents in the audience that may want to speak to this as well. We had received some questions about the status of the project overall, and Alderman McLendon, in particular, had asked us to provide responses and provide an opportunity to have this discussion tonight. And so we've gathered that information, tried to respond to the questions that we had overall. I won't answer every single one of them. They're in the memorandum, and that has been posted on our website. And we do also have a site that is for the Monticello project itself. And if we don't have this up there, that'll be up there in the next day or so. But this is designed to give you an update overall on the project. The sewer line work is complete at this point, and the portion of paving that the sewer contractor was to do is also complete. The sewer contract itself was about $1.25 million was what was awarded. Fortunately, as you may recall, when we awarded that a year ago, it came in approximately 40 percent below what had been the estimate, the last estimate before we bid it, and again, came in at $1.5 million. An additional $300,000 of paving is taking place, both by the sewer contractor and by the streets department through our existing annual paving program. And those are costs, that $300,000 are a cost that the city alone is taking on and is not being spread as part of the assessment. So that $1.5 million was the contract amount for the sewer work directly, and that's what the assessment project is essentially about. Where we'll go from here is we'll need to obtain a final invoice and final change order from this contractor. At that point, we can start in motion the final assessment process, which is a two reading ordinance before the board that will establish the final cost of the project and set the assessment on the basis of that cost and spread it among the eligible residents. And so that is a process that we think from now till completion is anywhere from three to five months, depending on how quickly that contractor gets us those final costs. I'm only aware of an issue or two that we're working through with that contractor at this point, so we hope that that can come to us fairly quickly. And as soon as that comes to us, we start the process to review and finalize that and get to you the final action to set the assessment in place. A couple other things just of interest that we've talked about and that were questions in the inquiry that we had that I think I want to make sure we highlight. The initial assessment resolution provided for a 30-year spread in terms of the financing that was provided to residents should they so choose to use that. What we had heard in the public hearing process and the dialogue with the neighborhood, and at least some folks from the neighborhood, had indicated a preference that we look at 20 years. That's generally been our assumption since the discussions last June and July, that that would be where we would move to. But you'll need to take that action as well when you set the final assessment to establish the 20-year time period. We had also stated that we would use essentially the city's cost of money, the interest cost the city takes on something like this on a 20-year period, which we estimate to be approximately 4 percent. When we shared a year ago estimated costs with residents based on the contract bid amount, we had included an assumption of, I think, 5 percent for 20 years. So that number is a little bit lower than what is on the website and what was shared with residents at that time when we made those estimates by property based on the bid that was awarded. There are just a few other issues I'll touch on, and then we'll open it up for whatever comments or questions folks have. We had heard some question regarding how we used or applied information that was done in the design process, gathered in the design process. The neighborhood had been working on this, too, and asked Lee Company to be involved in looking at depths that were necessary to serve properties by gravity. And the question had arisen in terms of how that information was incorporated into our design process. And it absolutely was included in our design process and was shared with the designer directly, and resulted in really lowering the general service lines or collection lines in the neighborhood so that much fewer, as many as possible, as reasonable we thought within cost, could be served via gravity. And at one point prior to that, there were questions of 20 to 25 properties that might have issues with obtaining gravity service. This additional lowering addressed most of those properties. Our estimates right now is there are three to five properties that may have issues with direct gravity service, and there may need to be issue, actions taken on their plumbing system or within their home to help reach that line at the street. So we are continuing to look at that and work on that. You don't know that exactly until you're looking at each individual one, but that's our estimate at this point. There had been some concern about where we were on that, and that had been, and that change in design took place prior to the bidding of the process so that we could address the properties in this manner. The estimate of cost to go deeper, to have an absolute guarantee of gravity service to everyone, was significant. It was, within those sections of the project, a order of magnitude of two or three times the current cost to provide that, go to that depth. And when you apply that to the total project, that's probably, based on our estimates, without doing a design, but based on our estimates, is a 10 to 20 percent total cost escalation, which would be anywhere from $220,000 to $240,000, $250,000, based on a $1.25 million sewer construction bid. So that was an issue we looked at. You know, I think there is this issue remaining in terms of how the three or five properties, three to five properties that may be in this situation, how that gets resolved with those folks, if that's just an individual property owner issue, or if there are other options that want to be entertained to try to look at that issue. The other concern that was raised along the way, that there have been some questions about, is the stimulus funding grant opportunity. And basically, what happened through the state is they used the stimulus funding and ran it through their state revolving loan fund program, which is, was an existing and is an existing program, and chose to apply the stimulus funds through projects submitted into that process. The deadline for that process was February of 2009, and the direction at the time, and you may remember this term well, was they wanted only shovel-ready projects. And our understanding of shovel-ready projects at that time, and if you ask us today, would still be, a project that was ready to go to bid, that had approved designs, was an approved project, and was ready to go to bid. So what we did in the water and sewer area is we submitted every project that had approved plans to TDEC for the state revolving loan fund. And actually, when we submitted them, we did not entirely know that stimulus funding was going to come through, although we had a sense that that was going to be the case. So we submitted those. It happened that way. Monticello was not included at that time because it did not have approved plans. What happened down the line is by June of 2009, the board had taken action to move this project forward, to approve the project. And, you know, ultimately, I think the state did not move as quickly as maybe they thought originally they would. They went through a couple different rounds of applying funds, and by late 2009, we did have two assessment projects, sewer assessment projects, receive some grant funding. And that was Country Road and Boyd Mill sewer projects. They are much smaller in scale compared to Monticello. They are probably about an eighth of the size in terms of cost and scale. There's no way to know whether we would have gotten grant money or not. You know, we submitted it, given what we thought the guidelines were at the time of shovel-ready, and given how long it took for the decisions to be made, you know, Monticello might have been shovel-ready in the time they made grant decisions. We don't know. So that was, you know, an unfortunate part of the process. We acted on the best information and direction we had at the time with the deadlines we had. And, you know, we always try to act to maximize the kind of grant money we get to projects. And, you know, it's unfortunate if we missed an opportunity to get grant money in that way, but that was clearly not what we were trying to do, and we thought we were responding to the guidelines we were provided with at the time. The other issue I'd touch on that has been just a general question is the nature of the policy regarding how we decide to apply general capital funds within the sewer utility versus when we do an assessment. And the typical rule of thumb is that we apply assessments to where we are retrofitting and tying into a sewer program, a sewer area for a neighborhood that directly benefits that neighborhood only or primarily. When we use general capital funds is when it's a broader system-wide improvement, such as the installation of an interceptor line or upsizing of a line so that it serves a larger portion of the community, or somehow helps us enhance how our overall system functions. And that's typically how we guide and make that determination of what's an assessment project and what is a general capital-funded project. And again, of course, not general fund, meaning general taxpayer funds, but the general capital funds that are identified within the sewer budget, which is entirely funded for by ratepayers, not by the general taxpayer of the community. I've covered a lot fairly quickly, but I wanted to hit what I thought were the main points of the questions we had been asked. I didn't hit everything, so I apologize. If there's something else we need to expand on, be glad to do it or glad to have other staff who worked closely on the project work with it as well. And I know we have folks who want to speak to this in the audience.
Tim, you want to say anything? You're good. Because you brought that forward. So there, I know there are a couple people, the president of the homeowners association, I think, is here, but I've not met, so.
I'm going to give it.
Okay.
I'm Jay Wade Monticello, and I'm going to disagree with everything he just said about the ARA funding.
Well, can I tell you one thing?
What?
We're not going to go over that again.
I'm going to go over it.
No, you're not.
You don't want to hear it? That's why we're here, to tell these people what went on.
These people were all here.
No, they weren't. They weren't at the November 23rd.
The voters were all here. The aldermen are here. We're not going to rehash the ARA funding. It's not an issue at this moment.
It's an issue with us.
It might be, but it's not an issue with this board.
Okay.
So we will discuss other issues, but that's not going to be the issue we discuss. Yeah?
I'm the president.
Okay.
My name is Donna Rand, and I am president of the Monticello Homeowners Association. And I must say that I'm very disappointed by what just happened. I feel that frequently, in order to understand what has happened or where we are with the current issues, you've got to know the history. And I know most of you all do not know the history. Is that correct?
Everybody on this board was here at that time.
But, I mean, have you heard our side of what happened with the funding?
We have gone through this for, well, at least since the ARA funding started, which was in January of this year.
We have been told many different things by you all as to why we were not on the list.
You know, and I'm not going to be rude about this, and I try not to, but there are issues that are pertinent that we can have control over. There are issues, I think Eric made the statement correctly, that we followed the guidelines as we knew them at that point in time. If there was a mistake made, we're not aware of it. But even if there was a mistake made, there's nothing we can do about that at this moment.
Okay. But you know, the thing is, we would all have felt a lot better if you'd let Mr. Wade just speak for five minutes. That's all it would have taken, and we would have all felt a whole lot better.
Well, then let him come and speak.
Thank you.
And that would be fine.
I've been working on sewers for Monticello since 2002. I'm not with the homeowners board, so my comments are my own. We held a neighborhood vote in 2007 this summer. We expressed purpose to be annexed to get sewers. We were told at that time, the only way we could get sewers was we had to be annexed, and there had to be 100 percent gravity system. Subsequently, that policy changed, and county pressure systems could now connect to the city sewer. But by that point, we had already been annexed. And then in April 2008, Smith, Ekman, Reed is contracted to do the final design work for our sewer. Then we had the economic collapse in the fall of 2008. A lot of residents lost over half their retirement funds or their jobs, could no longer get home improvement loans, and weren't sure they could still afford the sewers they voted for. Then we had the stimulus package come along in February. Now, I'm a retired federal in Now, I'm a retired federal employee, and I got a little experience with grant money, particularly how it comes down through the cabinet departments, and in this case, it would have been the EPA, down to TDEC, and now to local state governments. And I thought Monticello would be an excellent choice, or prospect, to be on the stimulus list. So I asked through our aldermen if we would not qualify for that list. And on February 17th, the city's response was, so far, this hasn't been made a part of the submission. Staff questions whether or not this can be ready for construction in the timeframes given. We still have to do design complete, easement documents developed, and then easement acquired. And that was said, even though four days prior, on February 13th, Smith, Ekman, Reed had completed all construction documents, had signed the cover letter to submit them to the state of Tennessee. And at the CIP meeting, they had said, the city had been very aggressive to include projects. So eventually, I go back to the state of Tennessee and get the January 8th solicitation letter that TDEC sent out. And it just asked the local governments to submit their water projects so they can be ranked. Now, this form doesn't say anything at all about needing completed construction documents, having final costs, needing to be shovel-ready, needing to have a TDEC permit or easements acquired. It's to send us your projects, and one of those type of projects is a clean water state revolving fund. You go back to the state of Tennessee, and what's required with a clean water state revolving fund? And what is required is a preliminary cost estimate and a preliminary design. That's all. Based on that criteria, we could have gone on this list the day after we were annexed in 2007. I went back through the Open Records Act to the city of Franklin and got copies of the three sewer documents they actually submitted in response to the solicitation. They're each just a one-page letter, form letter, and that's all there is to it. And if the city had bothered to take 10 minutes and go back to the city of Franklin Monticello sewer report, and do a cut-and-paste copy on a one-page form, Monticello sewer report, or Monticello sewer project, 10,000 linear feet of 8-inch sewer line, estimated cost $1.8 million, estimated construction start date, fall 2009, and submitted it, Monticello absolutely would have gotten ARA stimulus funding, with 40 percent of their sewers paid for, and the rest on low-interest loans. Now, on March 30th, we get our approved TDEC permit. Then we go to the 1st of May, and that's when the state releases the projects ranking that everybody had submitted. And the three sewer projects that were submitted were ranked 25, 26, and 27. Their construction start date is October 09. You go back to how the state ranked those projects, and by the fact that Monticello had documented septic system failures, and is a matter of yards from the water quality impaired Harpeth River, we would have garnered enough points to likely have been the number one ranked project in the state of Tennessee. Then we go to our public hearing. One of the residents asked about ARA funding. Well, the staff didn't seem to know much about it then, so they get back to us. When that Q and A comes back, that one question on stimulus funding is omitted. Then we get to the June 17th priority deadline. And what that is, if a project could have all construction documents signed by June 17th, they could jump ahead of higher-ranked projects that weren't quite ready to go. And if you look at the funding criteria spelled out by the state of Tennessee, the state goal is to enter into binding commitments for projects which will proceed to construction or award of construction contracts by February 17, 2010. So we opened bids on July 17th, one month past the priority deadline. But it really wouldn't have mattered. It would have been at the top of the list. Then on August 27th, the state TDEC issues the Boyd Mill construction permit. And then on September 25th, the city gets notified that their ARA sewer projects are going to get funded. And that's the point when I started investigating why Monticello hadn't been able to make the list.
What was that date again?
That was September 25th. We held, a large group of residents held a meeting in this chamber on November 5th with city officials to discuss that issue. And city officials in unison swore up and down that it was because we did not have an approved TDEC permit by February 16th. If we, that had been the one thing that had prevented us. If we'd only had that permit, they certainly would have put us on the list. And that story was written up in the Tennessean on February, or November 10th. I went back to the state of Tennessee, to Dr. Bagger Sammy, the manager of all the state revolving funds, and asked him that specific question. City of Franklin tells us we can't participate in the stimulus because we didn't have an approved TDEC permit by February 16th. Is that true? His answer, no, you did not have to have a construction permit to get on the state revolving fund priority ranking list. So I get a copy of that, we get a copy of the Boyd Mill permit that had just come out in August, and we go back to the city and say, what's up with this? Well, the city changes their 10th. Oh, that was a mistake. You really didn't have to have a TDEC permit. And the Boyd Mill water line is what we meant to put out, but we dragged the Boyd Mill sewer line by mistake. That's why their TDEC permit was late. Well, that mistake got funded. But more importantly, the new excuse, oh, my Monticello wasn't able to participate is because we weren't shovel-ready. You go back and look through all the state documents that I could find, the word shovel-ready don't appear anywhere. You look at that original solicitation letter of January 8th, it certainly doesn't appear there. You go to the congressional legislation, signed by the president, you don't see the words shovel-ready. But what it referred to was vernacular for that June 17th priority deadline, to be what they call ready to proceed, shovel-ready. You go back to the three documents that the city actually submitted for their three sewer projects, each and every one of them has a construction start date well past that priority deadline. So none of the projects the city submitted could have been considered shovel-ready, but it was Monticello that was given that excuse. And let's see. And then here, on August 4th, in the letter that comes out on the memorandum to the alderman about the status of our project, on the last page, it says, "At the time for submission for ARA funding, city staff did not believe that Monticello project would be able to meet the requirements in the timeframe required by the AAR funding program. Therefore, the project was not submitted for inclusion in this program." Now, remember, Smith, Ekman, Reed has all documents signed, ready for the state, February 13th, 2009. The absolute funding deadline, just to have a contract signed, is February 17th, 2010. So staff doesn't think we can get a bid and a contract signed in a full year? So what we end up with is, we know that Monticello could have applied for and gotten ARA funding. If the city had gone back and spent 10 minutes filling out a one-page form letter and had submitted it, as asked by our alderman, we absolutely would have gotten funded. Now, that's a tough pill to swallow, with the assessment district coming up, for the residents to know, if the city had only taken that 10 minutes and filled out that letter, that 40 percent of their sewer project would have been forgiven, and the rest would have been on low-interest loans. Now, what did the city get in the end for their ARA sewer projects? They got two small projects. You've got Boyd Mill and Country Road, two small residential projects where the residents did not want to be on sewer, but they were forced to go on sewer so they could participate in ARA funding, with the bulk of the money going to the Semen Ridge Sewer Line, which is the same financial size as Monticello, is 24-inch sewer line, over to South Corether's to facilitate development, the state's lowest-ranked type of project. I personally am very sorry that Monticello ever got involved with being annexed into the city of Franklin. It has been a mistake. Thank you for your time.
Do you want to say something else?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want?
Do I need to sit through?
Yeah, it would be.
Okay.
Could we turn up the speaker?
Yeah, they just need to get, make it closer to the microphone.
Well, thank you very much for letting Mr. Wade speak. I hope that shed some light, pardon me? Some light on why we are frustrated homeowners and citizens of the city of Franklin, and the reason all these people are here is to show you how concerned we are. And I'd like, if they would, just to raise, the Monticello residents, to raise your hand so you'll see how many of the folks that are here, and why they're here, and are concerned. I'm going to go to the assessment, because I know we probably have taken more time than we might should have, but anyway.
And remember, there is, just so everyone knows, when we do the public hearing, when we do the two reading, there will be a full public hearing.
Okay.
Of that. So that will be open to anybody who wants to talk, and we will give everybody the opportunity to talk at that particular thing.
Okay.
Whenever that happens.
Okay. I would like to mention my thoughts and concerns about the assessment, and then I think Jim, our past president, is going to come and speak about the grinder pumps, because those are really, we have other issues we're concerned about, the remaining connection fees, and some of the other things, but the assessment, and the folks that are going to have to have grinder pumps are probably our biggest concerns at this point. The assessment, my understanding of the assessment, and we'll just use a million-two, because that's the number I think we've been using, that is the cost of the infrastructure that we are being assessed. Okay, that is a set cost. And my, what I don't understand is, there's wording that the assessment is going to be reevaluated annually. And so I'm assuming that means if I improve my property, my assessed value goes up. But the cost of the project's still the same. That hasn't changed. Cost is cost. So if my assessed value goes up because my property increases, does that mean that my neighbor's assessed value goes down? The pie is still the same.
But that's what it means.
Yes, that's what the state law requires, that we spread the value based on your relative assessed value amongst, you know, the same cost spread amongst folks based on their assessment at that time, and it changes over time.
It changes every year.
Yes, it will.
And that's state law?
That's state law.
And that's another issue I have. The code that you referenced in the email that you sent is 7-331314.
101 through 14.
Yeah, well, all that you quoted was the last one, 314. What about the 101 through 314? We have been told, from the very beginning, that this assessment would be transferable if we sold our home. And we, Jim Mays and I spoke with Mr. McLendon, 1st of June, middle of June, about that, and you said you would support that the assessment be transferable if the property changes hands?
It would be my preference, if we can do this, that the, I believe we're obligated to place a lien. I don't think we have a choice about that. My preference would be that in the event of a transfer, that the city issue a lien waiver for the remaining balance, allow the transfer to go through without a full payoff, and then re-record whatever is left, so that the sale of a home tomorrow, let's say, the day after the assessment district is finalized, that a sale of a home the day after does not require the payoff. A sale of a home 10 years later does not require the complete payoff. It requires the, as the amount, the home would have accumulated whatever additional value, hopefully, and the lien would be waived for the purpose of the transfer and the financing, and then re-record it at the then-appropriate amount. That would be, that would be my preference. I don't want this process to result in a, in an artificial price hike that is, because that's what it would be, if you, if you had to pay off the lien.
Right, or you lose that money. Correct.
Well, the seller, the seller would want to include enough to pay off the lien and still get what they feel like the home is worth.
Exactly.
And that would have an artificial inflation.
Right.
On the price.
And an already bad economy.
And so.
Houses down.
If it is possible for the city to do that, to establish a policy, we, I don't think we have a choice but to record the lien.
Right.
If we can, from time to time, upon a, you know, if we're notified of a pending sale, I don't, I would like for the city to have a policy that says, we will record a partial lien release, or whatever is necessary at the registrar's office to permit the sale to go through, and then re-record the lien the next, you know, right after that, at whatever is then left to be paid.
Right.
I don't know if that's possible. That would be my preference, and I would support that.
Well, that would make a very big difference to.
Of course it would.
Yes. And so what, what do we need to do? How do, how do we go about having that?
Well, that'd be, there are a few things that I think we need to tidy up as we get into the finalization of the, of the, maybe more than a few things, but one of the things that we can do is that. And I'm going to ask staff to tell me whether that's possible or not.
Okay.
And if it is, then I will certainly advocate that with the, with the rest of the board, and the rest of the board can, because, and keep this in mind, I mean, I don't think anybody wants to create that kind of problem for anyone. And as we have done Highgate, and Monticello, and, the honest truth is, we continue to do these things, and we try to do them better than we did them the last time. And so as we continue to do these things, what we, what we hope to do is establish a coherent set of patterns and policies and practices.
Right.
Not only for you.
Right.
But for whoever's next.
Right.
So that as we have these conversations with whoever comes next, and make no mistake, there will be a next.
Oh, I know.
We want to be able to tell them, you know what we've learned? We've learned we can and can't do this. Here's the best deal we can make you, the rest of it, the state says we can't forgive. Here's the best deal we can make you, we're not playing games with you, we're not playing politics with you, that's as good as we can make it. And one thing we can do is either issue a lien waiver and re-record or not. So whatever we do with Monticello, we want to be prepared to do for whoever's next.
Right. Well, and I, because that's another thing, I was very surprised to see that there, that these assessments vary so much as to what's included in the assessment. Fees are waived for, like, we have some of our connection fees waived, but I noticed Boyd Mill doesn't.
Well, Monticello actually has, as I understand it, everything waived that state law allows us to waive.
And that was another question. Why does state law not allow, what state law doesn't allow the other fees to be waived?
I'm not a water sewer statute expert.
And the reason I ask that question is because I looked up the city of Cookeville, and the sewer connection fees for the whole, like, new construction, was $1,600. So, I mean, we're, what we are left with is $1,900. You're saying the state can't, you know, you can't waive.
Well, here's, in general, in general, water and sewer funds operate by law on a break-even basis.
But there's a fund balance in the water sewer.
The water, and, and when that happens, we have to adjust the rates.
It says $13 million on the 2009 financial statement.
Those are impact fees. That's a different animal.
The water and the sewer have to operate on a break-even, look, I'm, I'm trying to give you.
Okay.
An answer.
Okay.
If you don't want an answer, I'll stop.
No, I want the answer.
Okay.
Sorry.
Water and sewer have to operate on a break-even basis. And from time to time, you have to adjust the fees and rates and so forth to stay that way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I surmise that the difference in, apparent difference in price between Cookeville and Franklin is the cost of the system that's in place, and the cost of keeping the system in place, and building the system, and expanding the system, and renovating the system. We have a much, I would say, my guess, I've never been to the city of Cookeville's water treatment plant, but I would guess we have a larger one than they do. So our absolute costs and our costs are higher. We have a large, we probably have a larger system. I don't know how, just knowing that one city charges X, and another city charges Y, and we charge what we charge, tells us anything at all about why it has to be that way.
Well, and I understand that, but the city of Cookeville, with the city of Franklin has more residents paying water in city, I mean, water and sewer bills, too. Hopefully that, you know, I don't know how that would work.
Okay, that has to be spread across the rate base and, and adjusted for. So I don't know what, I don't know whether or not the city of Cookeville long ago reached its maximum.
Right.
Capacity, and has not had to do a city, you know, a system-wide improvement in two decades. If that's true, then they have, they may have no debt, no bond, no nothing to worry about there.
Right.
They're only going out and repairing, repairing pipes as necessary.
Right.
In that case, their ability to charge a lower rate, even though they have fewer people, may, may make perfect sense. I mean, I'm just talking in hypothetical terms, but.
Well, I just, if we could just understand why those fees can't be waived, what the state law is, it says.
Okay.
Then we'll feel better. I mean, we're going to, what we really want to do.
Ms. Bellingsley, I would ask you to be able to cite chapter and verse for us on what cannot be waived. It has been my understanding from the beginning, well, from during the process, that at, at some point in this process on, with the city, with the city and the citizens of Monticello, that we had gotten to the point where we had waived everything that could be waived, that state law permitted us to waive.
In just.
If we've left, if we've omitted something, if we have not waived something that we could, I will be the first one to ask that it be waived. I want, and I have wanted from the beginning, to make the citizens of Monticello the very best deal that we could. I regret that the ARAG funding was not applied for. Mr. Wade asked me to look into that, I passed that request along, you know, other than, other than, well, I don't know what, I don't know what I might have done differently, or what Mr. Wade might have done differently, or what other people might have done differently, except maybe make them say no. And, you know, if we had it to do all over again, knowing now what we know, maybe that's what could have been done. Knowing that, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what it tells us to do today, but about Monticello.
Right, well.
That is the, Mr. I differ, I differ with Mr. Wade in one respect. I regret that omission, but the rest of it, I don't. I mean, I, I don't know what other solution people in Monticello would have had. There wasn't one.
Yeah, well.
Failure rate was what it was, lots of people at Monticello were perfectly happy with no problems, but the people that had problems had homes that had been rendered, to some extent, without value.
Right.
And it would have continued to go that way, and there is no other solution for Monticello as a, as a neighborhood, except to tie onto the city of Franklin and sewer. And going through this process, some of the numbers have changed, but never for bad reasons. The, the process has been, we have made no decisions other than in this room. I remember meeting with politicians and appointed officials who are long gone, at the big church across from Monticello's, I don't even know how long they were, when this process started, and, you know, from, so maybe more than anyone in the room, except you, I've been at those meetings, and at every step we've done, as far as the city is concerned, I have, I have a clean conscience about trying to be as accurate and fair and, and forthcoming as possible. Now, I realize that if you're on the other side of the room getting the bill, you've got some concerns about that, but with the exception of the exclusion of our, of the ARAG money from the, from the request, everything, I don't know, I don't know that I regret it all in the same way that Mr. Wade and maybe others.
And we're going to have to move on, so if you, if, if you've got.
Okay, we do have some other issues, but we will, can we, can we ask to be, and I do want Jim to speak, but can we ask to be on another session like this before the public hearing?
We'll have a public hearing on the, on the, as a, as part of the process for the.
But that's like towards the end of the process, isn't it? Like when the assessment is set?
Well.
We have things we'd like to talk about prior to that.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, why don't you send, you and whoever else can come see me, and to the extent that they need to be.
Okay.
Work session-type thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Mays, past president, and I'll be brief. Really, the one point that I wanted to address specifically was just kind of correspondence the past couple of days relative to kind of our all, our overall process of trying to get to full gravity sewer in our subdivision. So three, five, however many houses that are ultimately affected, I think we really need to bring those folks that are going to be slightly disadvantaged with additional costs through grinder pumps, that we were trying to work very aggressively to avoid at all costs by SSR coming to us and saying, listen, we need to have you go inspect these twenty homes. Twenty homes were identified, those twenty homes within contacted everybody, lead company came out, did the assessment, and so it appears, we have not verified numbers, but it appears that there are going to be several houses affected, specifically with the need of grinder pumps, which will increase their potential cost. So before the final assessment district is done, instead of the figure that Eric you shared, which was two hundred and something thousand dollars, which we didn't have, you know, the, the general statement was this in the newsletter in March of '09, which was, we've been contacted by SSR, we're going to go inspect these twenty homes, the objective is put the pipe deep enough in the ground so that it accommodates everybody, because if it's too shallow, these twenty homes, potentially more may be affected by not being able to have gravity sewer. If it's too deep in the ground, it raises the cost. So a total agreement relative to that, just didn't have that figure to, to figure that. So all that information was given, the pipe was dropped, again, best efforts, it still appears that we still have a few houses, again, not verified yet, but a process of verifying that before the assessment district, so that, that could be included or absorbed or offset some way, so that those homeowners are not adversely affected, as the majority of the homeowners in our subdivision are not going to have those extra costs. So just specific to the grinder pump issue, and that's all I have.
We had looked at, and I talked to Eric about today, the possibility of being able to throw them into, that cost into the special assessment district, and we will check to see if that's allowed, don't know if it is or isn't, but certainly, I'm getting a look over there, but, but certainly, well, if it's five homes and it's, you know, twenty thousand dollars or whatever the number is, that's better than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And so I, I think that you all would have to approve that as part of it, and, and we would give you that information, let's know if we're allowed to do that.
And we need to determine, obviously, before the final assessment, to see which houses are affected.
Yes.
You know, so.
And, and we're in the process of trying to do that at the moment.
Okay, so just, the bottom line is, we just don't want those homeowners to be disadvantaged.
Yep.
Relative to the others.
And we understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just summarize what I think we're following up on that needs to happen or look, be looked at as we work to finalize the assessment. One is the ability to do what Alderman McLendon described as the, the waiver of lien. It's described in here that we can't defeat these liens through sale or anything else, but we'll look at what our options are and see what we can do, and bring that to you to look at. The fee waiver issue in terms of what state's.
I just want to confirm, I want to confirm that we, that we have, I think we all meant to waive anything we could.
Mm-hmm.
I want to confirm that we have.
Right, so we will confirm that and then look at the ability to look at this grinder pump cost and how that could be applied into the assessment overall, or how that, what our options might be around that. I think that's.
And.
The follow-up items.
And I'll be happy to meet with.
Then we'll look at a meeting follow-up or however that works best.
Whatever, if we need to have a meeting, me and the HLA people, or just, I mean, anyone for that matter, let me know. I'm apparently not going anywhere for eight years.
All right, and I'll just, I'll just comment, too, the statement was made that we're not waiving access and installation fees at Boyd Mill, we are, we're doing the same things we're doing in Monticello, we're doing for everybody else going forward. Once we decided to waive those fees, we applied that to everybody that might.
Every time we've, every time we've made a, made the next, I don't want to say deal, but every time we've made the next arrangement with similarly situated people, we, we have never made it worse, in terms of doing what we could do in terms of waiver and, and, and just to address one thing Mr. Wade said, you're right, when, when the conversation was held at the church years ago, it was contemplated to be a gravity sewer for everyone. At the time, the city's policy, and I don't know whether it was written or unwritten or just the longstanding practice, was that we did not do anything except gravity sewer, and we only did them, that's all we ever did. As we have gotten into the, the situation where neighborhoods have needed to be retrofitted, we reexamine that policy, and you're correct, along the way, it happened that Monticello was probably the first neighborhood to come in and talk to us about it, but not the first one to actually go through the process. And, and as the, as Highgate and others have gone through the process, we have had to confront the fact that some neighborhoods would be prohibitively expensive to retrofit straight gravity, and so we have begun to allow a combination of gravity and grinder pump systems, where to do so met the need, the safety and welfare needs of the people without unduly burdening the assessment district. And that's, that's why that evolution has occurred. But you're correct in stating that the, that the first, the first conversations were, were about gravity only, that's, that's accurate.
Can I ask about the engineering costs? Because it seems that some assessment districts don't have the engineering costs included and some do.
Mr. Stuckey, could we?
I'm not aware of any time we haven't.
The only, only one that did not include the engineer was the very first one, actually, we already started, it is not in the engineering section, and the rest of them are stated, they go into engineering, construction cost, or budget cost.
And I just want to state, too, before we finish, that there, those other developments that got sewer, it wasn't that they did not want them, there were a lot of people in these developments that did want them, and Country Road, there were about half the people there that wanted them, and so, you know, just, just want to say that, because it wasn't like everybody did not want them.
All right, let's move on. Item number six, and you all don't have to sit through the rest of this if you don't want to. Thank you, Neil.
We do.
You're welcome. I'll just make sure anybody have any comments on six. Item number seven, we're rejecting all bids, and we're going to rebid that, that's on the agenda tonight.
We're actually looking at doing that internally, in some options, to not have to bid it in that way.
Item number eight, application for a grant. Now, you all have any, I mean, there is some matching funds on that, but is it structured in your budget?
It, it's not entirely budgeted, we'd have to look at that, we'd like to submit, though, to see what kind of success we'll get, we don't know what kind of.
No more grants.
Grant funding we'll get.
No more grants, no more money, no, no more nothing. They're all instead of paying you with quarters. Now on.
We're going to try to get this one.
This is just for application.
Yeah, this is to apply, it'll come back for a decision if, if there is an opportunity to match.
Item number nine is a bid to put sod on the sports fields at Fieldstone Parks.
And this would be female-eligible funding as well, this is recovery from the flood at Fieldstone.
Okay, item number two, review and discussion regarding London Lane and the unused city right-of-way. Recommendation, frame what we can, if that's in your ward, if you want to defer, that's fine.
Item number ten.
I'm sorry.
Oh, number ten, okay. I thought you said number two.
September, the first meeting in September?
Yes.
We're fine with that. Everybody happy with that?
Some people want to come here, they can come and.
That's great. Great. We're happy with that. Item, item number eleven, consideration ordinance to rezone point seven acres from medium residential R2 to residential variety RX for property located along Eddy Lane between Glen Cove Court and Lucinda Court.
And just to be brief, this is, as the mayor indicated, this is a request for rezoning. What the applicant would like to do is create one lot for a single-family house. They currently have two duplexes on three, on two lots, they'd like to create an additional lot. The, they cannot, they don't, their lots are not sized so that they can meet the R2 criteria, so they are looking at an RX. That will then allow them, the duplexes to come into conformity with the zoning that's already in place, or with the zoning that would be in place.
The neighbors were generally in favor of this. The, the only problem that I have is, again, if it says RX, that does not designate a, you know, a density there, and this points to what we have said already, that we need to have the concept plan with that density going along with the rezoning. I don't, I don't think there's a problem here, in fact, I suspect that the lot that's being created really fits the zoning. It's the, it's the duplexes that, that's right, the duplexes that, no. But please, let, can we say direct to get the concept plan with the rezoning in the same document?
We're working, we're working.
We're working, and we're, we're doing a lot of, of talk among staff and others to try to get something that.
Okay.
That will fit the bill.
And we've had several meetings, and they're just making sure that we can make it compliant with our zoning ordinance. Okay, item number twelve's the same thing.
Same thing. It's the concept.
That is the concept.
That is right, right.
Item number thirteen, consideration ordinance two thousand and ten dash forty-five, entitled ordinance to revise the permitted uses in scientific research overlay zoning district.
That's right, and this is the, the beginning of the text amendment for the permitted uses. We have added at the applicant's request, office, clinics, and educational facilities as permitted only as accessory uses. We've, we have tied those uses directly to the scientific research primary use, because we believe that that's appropriate to define those uses. I know that the applicant would like to see clinics as a permitted use, staff, however, feels that this use needs to be tied to the scientific research use itself, because clinic is a very broad use.
Plant planning, yeah, with that, I think there was one.
I might just come in and suggest that it be rezoned to agricultural.
I don't necessarily disagree with that.
All righty then. Item number fourteen, consideration of ordinance two thousand and ten dash forty-seven, ordinance to amend chapter three, section three point four four and three point four five, and chapter four, the city of Franklin zoning ordinance regulating development within the floodway overlay district and the floodway fringe overlay district.
And this is the first of three of these ordinances that will be coming before you for discussion. This one simply allows people who have been flooded to rebuild, and I did want to bring up an error that we made on page two, that would be three point four, point five, B.I., and just take out any residential, residential does not need to be in there, any building needs to meet those floodway criteria for FEMA. So it's not just residential, it would be commercial as well that would need to meet that criteria. Other than that, this is simply to allow rebuilding and, and use of property on places that have been currently.
And that's something we kind of need to get moving.
We do need to get moving, and it is on the agenda for tonight, because there are people waiting.
Let me, let me tell you, after looking back over this again, look and see if that should say three point four, point four, parentheses, four.
Three point four, point four.
Or maybe it doesn't, I, I, that was a, is that okay?
Yes.
The five is okay.
The five is fine.
Okay, over on the back, it still refers to five point eight, point five.
Yeah, five point eight, point five is one of the ones that we will be bringing forward.
That's right, but it really doesn't, it's not up right now, is it?
It's not up right now, that is correct.
And just for clarification, this is not on agenda tonight, it will be next, two weeks.
Okay, but, but, yeah.
And we will, we'll.
Yeah, I know.
Fix it in the meantime.
Item number fifteen, consideration ordinance two thousand and ten dash forty-six, and order to amend title sixteen of the city of Franklin municipal by creating chapter twelve for the purpose of adopting the city of Franklin parcel and building a dressing manual. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I thought that the dressing manual had to be done through nine-one-one, the county.
It's tied to nine-one-one county and the post office.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, let me first introduce you, for those of you that are, to people watching, Lori Drews from our planning and sustainability department is responsible for coordinating all the addresses of buildings and streets in new development, and what we had found about a year ago, if you might remember, we brought to you the idea of coming to, putting together a manual that outlines all the different types of scenarios, but as Alderman Peterson mentioned, yes, Lori's primary responsibility is, is coordinating with our, our public safety departments, as well as nine-one-one, the county assessor's office, to make sure the addresses coincide to parcel numbers, but that manual that we shared with you is much more comprehensive of just that, but I wanted to, to recognize Lori's work in completing that, but also to answer any other questions you might have.
Well, do we charge fees now? Are they the same? Are they or not, are they?
The fees that we have in there are for if they want to change a street name, that kind of.
But we hadn't, we hadn't charged before that. No, okay. I just, just wanted to say.
It is, we go forward in developing as a community, you know, that's going to become more likely that we may have to go back and change names. And that doesn't even account for the requests from time to time that people come in and they want to change their house or, or maybe a street wants to change their name. That can get time consuming for us to pursue.
Dana McClendon Drive.
Sorry. Not going to happen.
I'm defending you.
Dana McClendon Memorial Drive.
On page five, the planning and sustainability department shall review any out of sequence addresses. All right, they're out of sequence all over town.
They don't really mean that.
You're just going to leave that alone, I hope.
The one that comes to mind is Franklin Road. The addresses duplicate themselves between us, the county, and Brentwood. And there's already been one incident that has occurred just because of that reason.
You mean the numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
If you thought people turn out for sewer, tell them they have to send out the address.
Well, now, we've done that, you know.
Yep. And they turned out.
Did they not?
Old Liberty Pike. Old Liberty Pike. Absolutely.
And that, that really is the, the primary reason for developing the manual because as we go forward, those situations are going to come up and having somebody very in tune and in touch with the addressing scheme and the oversights that have been made to date, correcting them is a sensitive issue and we got to make sure that we're on the money as we go forward. And that's really what Lori's been able to do over the last couple of years working in the department.
And as you joke, and while we joke about it, it is vitally important because the, our first responders need to be able to go to the right address. There's no question about that, so.
If, if any addresses have to be changed, it's not like that we're just going to go out there and just change them. It all has to be approved first. I mean, there will be, you know, they'll go through the same as everything else that's through the city.
See, the pizza guy can never get straight Boyd Mill Avenue or Boyd Mill Pike. And, and, you know, it's always difficult where I live.
No cable, can't get pizza?
That's, that's, man. Okay. Any other questions? Item number 17, thank you all. 16, I'm sorry. And 17. Fees, codifying of fees. We, we almost never talk about those. Any questions, comments?
Yes. On, on the number seven, 17, item 17, those road impact fees don't have any listings at the top of those columns. That means, you know, they, they mean, they mean nothing.
In, in title 22-
See, they don't, they don't have any, they don't have any designations at the top of those columns.
Yeah.
What does the column stand?
That's right.
I will, I will correct that. Thank you for pointing that out. And I want to bring it back.
Item number 18, consideration of interlocal agreement with Williams County government for the transfer of received funds from the Justice Assistance Grant Program, amount of $5,336, the JAG, and to Williams County government.
That needs to be pushed back, Bennett. We don't have any material for that.
That's right. We, we have an amendment to the agreement and then we'll just have to put that for you guys at the next meeting.
Right. We're going to need to push that back.
Okay. Item number 19, consideration renewal of letter of credit for the industrial development board.
Have Russ come up and address this issue?
The best way to start this is once upon a time. As you know, the, the city and the county entered into some agreements when Nissan agreed to relocate their headquarters here. And part of the city's agreement was to provide through the industrial board the land for that headquarters to be built. And the industrial board borrowed the money and is paying back the bonds through the taxes that arise, property taxes that arise in that particular district. But at the very beginning, the taxes were pretty meager because we were waiting for things to be built and put on those tax rolls. Excuse me. So the city entered into a loan agreement with the industrial board to advance some money to go ahead and pay for that. This is the end of the fifth year now of, of that arrangement. And the letter of credit that, because the industrial board really has no assets, they had to have a bank letter of credit to stand behind the bonds that were issued. And it's time for that letter of credit to be renewed. And of course, what the bank would like to know is, does the board have in mind changing anything on that revolving loan agreement? And obviously, I don't think any of us want to put the industrial board in a spot where they don't have access to that ability to make those payments on the bonds on a regular basis. And we do want to continue that. The bank has merely asked that the, that the mayor provide a letter to the bank stating that the agreement that we have between the City of Franklin and the industrial board is still in place, it's still active, and we really have no inclination at this time to change that. Again, they're not looking for any furtherance of an agreement or anything more elaborate than that. They just want relative confirmation that we're not going to change in midstream. We are talking with our financial advisor, PFM, about alternatives to potentially, while interest rates are low, the possibility, albeit remote, of taking out those bonds for fixed rate bonds or, or doing something else. But the, the easiest thing to do and probably the most cost effective for the next two to five year period is to leave those in place and to have that letter of credit reestablished with the bank. So we just did not want to go forward with that without notifying the board of what's out there. I've sent you, I didn't realize it was quite that many pages of, of history of all of that, of when it went to the board in 2005, what some of the forecasts were, where we stand on that arrangement right now. And given the, the financial meltdown of 2008 and all the things that have followed and been postponed, we're remarkably well along as far as seeing the, the property taxes go up. We do estimate the next, the next fiscal year, which is for calendar 2010, will take in about $800,000 in those property taxes that arise from the Tiff district. And those are the taxes that, that are layered on top of what we were gaining from those, whatever, five or six or 700 acres back in 2004 and 2005. It's gone from taking in about $30,000 a year to about $830,000 a year. So, and it's, it's pointed upward with some of the new projects that are ostensibly coming our way.
So is this a renewal every, you do it a five year in the making?
It has been five years in the past. One of the things that we would like to negotiate with them is the possibility of just extending it year to year, or extending, or, or having a five year letter of credit with our option to, to bail out. I mean, we basically pay for it a year at a time, so we always have the option of, of walking away from the table. It's not a long-term arrangement, but it's one that needs to be put in place for the benefit of the bondholders.
Now, with our consultants though, are they going to get back to us and let us know if they see any other alternatives, or it's best to stay the course with this?
Well, what we'd like to do is go ahead and make sure we've got a bird in the hand by getting the bank the information they need. Let them go ahead and agree to, to renew the letter, quote us the price. We'll see what the price is. If it's too high, we'll move to another bank and, and let someone else step into those shoes. But we have really until January to let PFM come back to us with a recommendation.
And we, we do need to say, as you, you explained to me, part of the problem is that right now, the money that's coming in from the taxes won't pay the note per year. And so they're borrowing from the City of Franklin to, to pay the difference. But it's really moving toward the, to the ability to pay the note just from the taxes. However, they'll still owe us what we have paid so far. And so that, that is a part of it too. But, but as I say, they're really moving very close to being able to, to pay this on the money that's generated by them. But it's just not there yet.
That's right. And we did, we did set it up as an interest bearing. It's an arms-length transaction, so they are paying us interest that is roughly equal to what they would be paying to on the bonds. So it's actually our most profitable investment right now.
I guess at the moment, oh.
And if we weren't paying for it with our own taxes, it would be a pretty good deal.
But also that, that the last scenario on the many pages that you sent to us is the one that really fits us right now. That we're down, down right now, but that even then we're, we're moving up to-
It is. We did several scenarios when this was set up, you know, kind of a good, better, best. And one of the scenarios was that we could have as much as two-year delays on some of the revenues, on some of the construction, and possibly one of the anticipated projects postponed. And that's pretty much what's happened.
Exactly what's happened, God's okay.
All right, thank you. Item number 20, consideration of pursuance of another grant for historic Rest Haven Cemetery and the city cemetery.
Hi, I'm Amanda Hall. I'm a part-time planner. Staff would like to pursue a federal preservation grant for the nomination of both city cemetery and Rest Haven Cemetery to the National Register of Historic Places. That register is the official list of the nation's properties worthy of preservation. And being on that list allows additional grant funding opportunities. As the recent flood has highlighted, both city cemetery and Rest Haven Cemetery are in need of dire repair, yet they're not eligible for federal monies for restoration because they're not on that list. The federal preservation grant is a 60/40 match and the estimated cost to be incurred by the city, if it is awarded the grant, is $1,600 to $2,000.
To have a beautiful cemetery. Historic.
Yes, sir. I'd like to see Toussaint Lovature added to this.
It's already on the national register.
Okay, so I've been contacted recently by people who have an interest, who have relatives there. But as best I can tell, there is not an active supervisory board for that particular cemetery.
There has been, I believe.
Well, we, I, I'll, I'm going to, I'll say this diplomatically, I may be wrong. When we did the Del Rio project, we had to condemn it because there was no one to sign off, there was no one who claimed or could prove authority to sign the easements. Okay? And it's my understanding that what may have happened is, is just something that happens. Everybody who was buried there, their relatives have also died or moved away or become too old to actively participate. And we have, sitting in the heart of Franklin, a, a cemetery that is not being looked after in the way that it deserves to be looked after. And if we're going after money to make one or another old cemetery that is, as far as I know, no one is currently being buried there. I don't know who you contact if you want to be buried there. I don't know who you would get permission from. Likewise, the cemetery. You can plant me there if you want, but, but if we're going after money and talking about the city becoming involved in, in caretaking for old cemeteries, there's one just across the street and we need to include it.
Yes. As Amanda indicated, that cemetery is on the national register. We're trying to get these other two cemeteries on the national register and then we would have to decide what needed to be done with them once they're on the national register. So we're not doing any repairs, any changes to the cemetery with this money. We're just trying to get them on the national register. Coming up in the following years, we would be looking at the city cemetery, Rest Haven, and other cemeteries that may need some funding. But at this time, we're just trying to get those two on the national register.
Okay, well, then maybe the memo is inaccurately labeled because it says, "The subject and the purpose is regarding staff's pursuance of federal preservation grant." All I'm asking is that when and if we start getting in the business of taking, of being a funnel or a conduit for, for the money to caretake these two, just kick another comma in there and put Toussaint Lovature on there as well. Okay.
Okay. Thank you all. Item number 21, discussion of Breeze Way School rezoning in concept.
Next.
There'll be a public hearing at the seven o'clock. And all we wanted to do is provide some opportunity if the board had specific questions or input they wanted to provide. One of the things we're working towards is drafting ultimately an interlocal agreement that would memorialize the commitments that were made or are described by Williamson County Schools, conditioned on getting approval for the rezoning and the concept plan. So to have that in concert with that, we've outlined, and the schools have outlined, the understandings that have been developed between the two respective staffs over the last couple of weeks. And I'll go over that in more detail at the seven o'clock, but we wanted to make sure this was understood. And if there's other things you want us to work on between now and two weeks from now or, or whatever, we'll, we'll be glad to continue that effort. This is a ongoing process and I think we've made very good progress in the last two weeks to more clearly define what can be done to address the various concerns and what, what the schools are willing to do in partnership with the city to help us get things done.
Maybe I'll start, please come up a moment.
Sure. He's here?
Thanks. I, I just want to be assured in the interlocal agreement that we're on the same page and that I know that you plan to move forward with the school regardless anyway, and plan to move forward. And I just want to make sure that with this interlocal agreement, that, that these things are going to happen, that we are going to partner if this does go through, if the vote does go through, that we'll be able to partner and work together. Because it's my intention that I think as a local official, especially as the local elected official in that ward, is my responsibility for the health, safety, and welfare of the people. And I think it would be our huge mistake if we do not look for that, the health, safety, and welfare of the people by partnering with you to put in the added infrastructure, the turn lanes, the traffic lights that I think are so critical for that area, that would not only help during the times that school begins and school ends, but would be a 24/7 addition of safety in that area. Because it would, the traffic lights are going to remain there, they're not, just going to work during and after school. They're going to work 24 hours a day. And I think it's very important that these issues, we work with you to get these safety issues because our charge is for safety, health, and welfare. And that is the bottom line that we always have to look at, no matter what we do as elected officials. So that is my number one concern.
Certainly, and certainly respect that. And good evening to everybody. I'd, I'd like to begin prior to making, or having a response. The city administration and staff members have really been over backwards to find solutions to the problem. And I just want to publicly thank you all for, for working with us so diligently. As I have stated before publicly and again tonight, we stand at the ready to partner with the City of Franklin. Our position is, we are going to go forward as it stands right now. Having said that, I, I believe that this is a way for us to partner and to accelerate some of the improvements that are already needed in the community. By selecting the Breeze Way site, we would be able to save some construction money and we would be able to utilize that construction money for some of the infrastructure improvements that, that portion of your community desperately needs. That would include traffic signaling at McEwen and Wilson Pike, subject to state approval, obviously, but you've already applied for that. We could contribute dollars. It would include a turning lane at McEwen and Wilson Pike, or turning lanes perhaps, depending on what the expert said is the, the best solution to the problem. It would include potentially traffic signaling at Wilson Pike and Clovercroft. Once again, because that's a state and a county road, we have to get the required approvals. And then obviously improvements along Clovercroft- And then obviously, improvements along Clovercroft to reduce the impact of the school. That would also include a sidewalk system in front of the proposed school so that students and residents could use that sidewalk immediately in front of the school and have safe passage across the road to the subdivision, I believe it's called Chardonnay.
From Breeze Way down as well, possibly. Would it be a way for the Breeze Way to get there on the sidewalk?
Yes.
And Chardonnay as well?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Leonard, it appears that with this school going in, that is yours desire, will these road improvements happen concurrently or will there be lag time between-
That's a very fair question.
-the school that, you know, will be built versus these road improvements?
That's a very fair question. I can say with relatively great certainty that the improvements on Clovercroft would take place concurrent to the construction, to include the sidewalk and the crosswalk and that sort of thing. Because Wilson Pike is a state road and you would have to go through the state in order to get the required approvals, I'm not sure. But we would work with the city with all due speed to try to make those improvements, either prior to school opening or immediately after, if possible.
And I was at a meeting with TDOT this morning to ask those questions and they said they would work with us as much as they could, even in light of the fact that they're a little bit, they have no leader at the moment. So the commissioner's been transferred to another department. But anyway, they were aware of it and they would do what they could to work with us.
And we think the signalization is something we could definitely work towards between now and next August, that that's very doable. The other larger-scale road project are probably going to have a longer timeframe to complete and we've got to provide for budgeting for those and work through that as well. But those will come a little, probably a little later, but may sync up more with the ramp up of the population in the school.
Let me also say that I have called now three times to CSX Railroad-
Thank you.
-to their government liaison person who happens to be in Brentwood. She has yet to return my phone call. So I'm going, no, I've got it under control. I will continue to make those phone calls. Just to at least let them aware-
Let's friend her on Facebook.
I think I may have her email address, so maybe that's right. She's in Brentwood, she's not, you know, so.
It may be she's in another part of the state.
So anyway, just let you know, I'm doing that as well.
In addition, in 2007, I remember when Mayor Rogers Anderson, and I'll make this real brief, that he came in here and we talked at the finance committee. And the monies that were going to come from the county to the city by state law through the construction, which is taking place within our city, that money actually got put in, if I'm correct, in the escrow account, right, Russ? And that, right. And I remember Mayor Anderson came and asked us to designate that money to stay in that escrow for schools. And we said, "Well, we don't know about that," but, you know. But he was actually right, coming to us and asking about that because that was for, he said, "Because when schools get built in your community and they impact your infrastructure, then you will have money to help with that infrastructure." And so I see partnering with you on this effort, whether we could discuss if we liked the place or didn't like the land, or you made the decision, we maybe didn't like the, whatever, we are where we are right now. So I think partnering with that and taking some of those funds, because that's what those funds are really, should be intended for.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion to move to executive session? All in favor, say aye.